This conference will now be recorded.
Ritter.
Here.
Murdock.
Here.
Thank you, council, everyone's present, mayor.
Okay. So I ask you all, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Our first item tonight is a public hearing regarding an unsafe structure at eighty-two twenty-five Delaware Street.
Yes, mayor. Thank you. Let me. Sorry. A few meetings ago, you guys packed the resolution setting this hearing tonight. The purpose of the hearing is to hear evidence from the city enforcing officer, Steve is here, prepared to present his findings to you. And then it's also an opportunity for the interested parties with respect to the structure. If they would like to provide evidence to the council on the topic of whether the structure is unsafe and dangerous, they are permitted to do that at tonight's hearing. At the conclusion of the presentation of that evidence and later in the agenda, you'll be asked to consider a resolution on topic of whether you believe the structure is unsafe and dangerous. So without turn over to Steve, thank you, Steve.
Okay, mayor, council, I put a quick presentation together for you tonight. Eighty-two twenty-five Delaware, we had the house fire on seven twenty-six.
Come on now, technology.
Yeah.
Did you turn it on?
Good to be there, man.
I'll I'll enhance the slide.
Sorry. There it is. These are some exterior photos of the day after the fire. You can see some of the debris outside the windows. A lot of windows are broken on both sides of the house. The fire was mainly in the back, this kitchen area, which had got in the face of the roof area there. We can see where it extended up into the roof line. But back door had been boarded up, the fire department couldn't even get in and out of there. This is the looking at it from the front door. This is going into the living room into the house. You can see the fire extension into the paneling area. As we go further into the interior, you can see the heat and the smoke and the fire damage, the ceilings out of it there. Lot of rafter damage. This is a kitchen area and it's completely burnt through in areas there. The electrical in this house was a disaster before the fire occurred. The fire department was looking at it after there was only two breakers in the entire house that were actually functioning. They had tied on to the two hundred twenty volt cord for the oven and spliced it in a hundred and ten circuits going out, you know, other appliances or uses, which is not compliant, obviously. A lot of electrical connections not in boxes. This house was built nineteen twenty. It's a knob and tube wired house. They were never designed to handle the electrical loads that we have today, let alone this type of wiring changes in a house. Potentially, the electrical may have been what's the cause of the fire. In addition, the occupants had a twelve volt car battery that led to wiring and switches for LED lighting in the bathrooms. I'll show you some pictures of that. They were doing that because the electrical circuits weren't functioning. Here's some of the electrical damage. They had line cords wired into some of the outlets too, and that's unknown though. The whole electrical system is going to have to be replaced in this house. Look at the heat above that outlet. May have been that they had an issue with that prior to even the fire, I don't know. You can see the rag wire hanging out of the ceiling there. There is the car battery. They had tied to the switch and then lights going into the bathroom and the shower. And more wiring just hanging out of the ceiling. Structure, it's has extensive fire heat and smoke damage. Exterior siding, windows and roof are damaged. There's going to have to be structural framing repairs or repairs required on this. Forty percent of the rafters are damaged, are burnt through. Electrical wiring, as I said, is not up to date. Prior to the fire, it's going to have to be completely rewired, everything in the house. Mechanical plumbing, there's been needed. They noted that they had water leaking in to the basement area, and they have no idea what that's from. Currently, all utilities are disconnected, and they have to be restored or reconnectioned. At the time of the fire, the occupant advised the fire department that they had no insurance on the contents. I posted this structure and saying they do not occupy. The occupant had occupied it after that. They're currently living in a camp, in a backyard with no utilities. The appraisal value on the house is eighty-three five eighty or hundred and five eight hundred total with the land value. I'm estimating sixty-five to eighty-five thousand to completely rehab inside of this house. And of course, if you were to demolish it, you're looking at between twelve and fourteen dollars a dollar. Any questions?
Questions from council? Kevin or Danny, anything?
No, mayor.
If he wants to make, yeah.
No, I don't have anything, mayor. He explained it, answered the questions I had.
Okay.
Good evening, you come to Northwest Fire. I can infer it will be with permanent investigation. That's a better than accurate reflection of what we witnessed. I would briefly outside the structure after the fire. The only other thing I think I have to add is that we did have to shut down open running permits at the address because of nuisance complaints from the neighbors. That's all.
All right, thank you, Pete. So I guess the next step would be officially open the public hearing, even though I don't see anybody here. So unless anybody has any questions, I'm going to officially open the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to speak to this matter? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Wayne Elmer. At eighty-two oh five Delaware, next door. This house has been ridiculous. I've lived there eleven years and since the day I moved in, it's been immense. I think everybody knows Majel, and she's a mess. And she has been on my side, probably doesn't help her, but I guess my curiosity is, this happened in July, and then she was, it was posted she could not live there. She left for a week, she came back, lived in a tent for three days, and moved back into the house. She's not really living in the camper. She had some friends that were living there. She lives in the house every day. She has pets there. She has other animals. She has more animals than the city allows. And this thing stunk. She has, I'll give her credit, she has tried to clean it up. The outside. But I guess I'm curious as to why this was posted as condemned and uninhabitable. She's been allowed to stay there. I've seen multiple sheriffs, fire investigators, health department, everybody has been out there, and she refuses to. And I'm just curious as to why nothing has been done. It's a hazard, not only to her, but the community, and I want to see something now. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? All right, seeing none, I'll officially close the public hearing. Any further action now, then we'll just take it up down in the agenda?
Yeah, no action, no action now, yeah.
All right, so when we get to that, we will, I'll ask that we address your question then, Mr. Elmer, what is the what? Why the process took so long when we take it up in the regular agenda? Okay. Next item is our consent agenda, approve the minutes from the council meeting of October first and approve payments number eight eighty-eight. Any discussion of a consent agenda item or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, Wayne, for the consent agenda.
No second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Not roll call, please.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion carried.
Okay. Our next item is called the public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under call the public may or may not be acted on by the council during the seat meeting. Is anyone wish to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Item three is old business, which we have none, so we'll go to item four A, receive presentation from Northwest Consolidated Fire Department. You have the floor, sir.
I don't know if that's good. It's all right with the council, I'm going to take off my mask, go with my glasses, sorry. Want to thank you. My name is Doug Bedford. I live at three two one seven West eighty-third Street here in DeSoto. Want to make note, what we want to do, and a few years ago, we came and began addressing the city council of everything that the fire department's been doing for the last year or the last six months, however the case may be. As you all know, Chief Todd Maxson, he's present. If there's going to be any questions that you may have with myself, Chief Maxson's here, and also two board members, Chairman Walt McDaniel and Bob Garrett, the board trustee also, and also the trainer for the board. So what we wanted to do is, we got with the chief and we broke it down a little bit. Some of the things, some of the areas, and whenever this is done, Mike or Ladd, I can give this to you if you would like. I don't know if the city council would want any copies of this, but this is the copy that we have.
Is that what's on the screen now, Doug?
Yeah, yeah, it is. I'm sorry, I guess it is, okay, yes, perfect.
We sent, yeah, Todd sent that over earlier.
Thank you, chief. Again, talking about the financials, what we wanted to let you know about is a few things that are definitely of interest to the members of the community. The mill levy, we did drop it again. It's the third year in a row we dropped it, point nine mills, which is always going to help. I know that appraisal values go up. We understand that the finances or the money that may be coming into the taxes. So at the same time, the board tries to respond accordingly with that. So we were able to drop the mill levy down. And again, we're still able to stay within our budget for the twenty twenty-one year, so we're anxious about that. Annual, and again, I'll try to hit some of these, since I know you have it right in front of you, I just won't try to read it all. Financial audits continue because of the new county requirements. We, every year, we are required to do an audit. And so the audits that we do for the previous year, everything is done as quickly as we can. And in two thousand and twenty, we were able to compete or complete, rather, the two thousand and nineteen audit faster than we've ever done before. So that's done and it was approved. We don't do that on our own. We actually have an independent company that comes in to do that, so it's really well. Any, any questions about the financials? It's, or if anyone has any questions, please let me know. I think it just. Equipment, you've probably seen them. Just this year, they were delivered, I want to say June and July, does that sound right? Two brand new fire engines. The fire engines we had, what we tried to do is to replace all of the equipment that we have in accordance with a kind of a set timeframe. We were definitely behind on the fire engines, we knew that. And fortunately, with the board's approval, the chief was able to come in. And again, with some of his battalion commanders, battalion chiefs, rather, they were able to kind of let us know what they wanted to do. The cost of that was, again, just under a million dollars, about nine hundred thousand dollars, but we have two brand new fire trucks. So that's always a good thing. The third fire truck, it's not that old, but what we want to do with the third one, which is the one that's in downtown DeSoto, we want to have that as the reserve. And so in a few years, two, twenty twenty-four is when we're anticipating working towards replacing that fire truck. And so then that fire truck will then become the reserve. The old fire trucks, they're currently on the market to be sold. There's a couple of different markets that are out there where with COVID, it's difficult for a lot of fire departments to buy the equipment, but we're still trying to work out the deals in that regard. Just so you know, whenever we figure out the budget for twenty twenty-one and talking to the fire department, a tender is going to be one of the pieces of equipment that they're really in need of. We currently have the equipment right now, but again, it's getting old. And so what we're looking at doing is that is in our budget for this next year. So that's going to finally be an approach just after the first of the year. A few years ago, what we did is we contacted Kansas Highway Patrol. They had some explorers. What they do is they cycle their vehicles out at about fifty thousand miles. They'll sell them with a light package. Some of the equipment may still need to be replaced, but it has to mount for the computer and things like that. So a few years ago, we were able to get the chief's vehicle, because we had a vehicle, we then rolled that into the VCs, and then we got the chief of vehicle, knowing that we didn't need a second vehicle if anyone was going to training or anything like that. We wanted to be as cost efficient as we possibly could for the the community. And so we went ahead and got a second vehicle in two thousand and nineteen. And that vehicle, we were able to get it marked, and it says there is an administration vehicle if anyone's going to training and things like that. So it works out really well. If you look under four A, talking about the fleet replacement plan, that's kind of what I was referring to earlier. The chief and the VCs on down to the lieutenants, they've been able to look at the equipment, all of the equipment they have and say, this is the time that it would need to be cycled out, whether you're talking about the vehicles, any of the equipment that they're going to have. So now all of that is on a replacement plan, so we know what we want to make that happen. If you haven't been down to it, the station two down at one hundred and twenty-seventh, the Gardner Road, we did remodel all that, which makes it a lot more user friendly. With COVID, it actually works out even better. There's separate rooms down there, a nice kitchen area, a nice little lounge area, I guess you could say. Unfortunately, with the COVID, I guess the good thing is that we got it done on time, that we're able to keep all the firefighters separated, so that really works out well. Staffing, this is going to be some of the big things that we're looking at here. We did get a safer grant for twenty twenty-one. And what that means is with the chief, whenever it was submitted, they were asking for four new firefighters, EMTs firefighter positions, and we did get that. And so that's going to be a hundred percent funded for three years. And what ends up happening with that is the grant will pay for three years, and then after that, the budget, it's all going to fall onto the board. But we're anticipating that, so that's really going to help us out a lot. What we are looking at for twenty twenty-one is actually hiring those four from the grant, and then a fifth position also for a firefighter EMT. And what that's going to do is we're going to be able to have, the standard is going to be a minimum of three people on every piece of apparatus whenever deployed. So that's, that's going to help out the community, and it's, it's going to be a very good deal, and we're anticipating that. What we're saying is how they're going to be hired by the end of the year, the grant funding would come in January first. They are going through the the process right now. The applications have been sent out. They have the application process, I believe it stopped right now, hasn't achieved. And so the applicants that they're going in, they're reviewing those now, going to do the background checks and then start the process. Our goal is to have all five of those positions hired in the, towards the end of December of this year. We place more of an emphasis on the community risk, including bringing in extra staffing during high fire danger days or the high wind. And actually, yesterday, and I believe Saturday, they're what they're forecasting. So we went ahead and did that also. We paid a little bit of overtime, but then again, that's, that's budget for what we need to do. Training. Chief Maxson and the board, we actually completed Kansas Open Meetings Act and Kansas Open Record Act education. We did that through Johnson County Government, and we do that every two years now. Diversity and harassment training for all employees is planned for November of twenty twenty. Leadership training, again, the officers continue. It's through University of Kansas Fire and Rescue, and also the Public Management Center, supervisory training in that regard. Rescue program is fully functional, and we'll touch base on that here in a few minutes. Boat operator training, they're doing day training and also night training. So that's a good thing that we have to have for all the firefighters. Turnout times, this is a big thing that people are always curious. Remember, there's only three fire districts, or there are three fire departments. How, that's not even the word, stations, there we go, that's the word I'm looking for. Three fire stations within the district that Northwest is covering, seventy square miles. Again, the response time, fifty-six seconds. And what that is, is whenever they get the call dispatch to them, they're going to be out of the station within fifty-six seconds. On scene response time for calls throughout the entire district is four minutes and forty-one seconds. If you look to the location of the fire stations, that's actually very impressive. Calls for service, it's down a little bit, probably from the pandemic. You know, a lot of people are probably staying home. There's not going to be as many wrecks, things like that, which is a good thing. But right now, for the year, it's just under a thousand calls. There is a number of, as you can read on there, lift assists, whether in town, down at Hillside Village, things like that. But the fire department is still responding to those. Water rescue, there was a water rescue that took place in August of this year. What ended up happening, there was some kayakers down on the call, their kayak flipped. They were hanging on to a tree, somewhat of a submerged tree. They had some other people, they were yelling for help. A call came out. When the fire department responded upon arrival at the scene, they had the people, the boat launched, they had them picked up in less than thirteen minutes. And so that was very impressive. The fact that we even have that equipment to use is probably even better, because it was just a few short years ago, we didn't have a boat. And so now we have two, but having the airboat right uptown, that really helped out quite a bit. Property loss report, and I contacted the chief regarding this, because I didn't understand exactly what it meant. There were sixteen structure fires, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand and change in losses, and then over two point five million in property saved. And I asked the chief, and he can clarify if he need to, but I think what that comes down to, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, it's the, the appraisers will come in and they look at the estimated damage of what they have or what it will take to repair it. In addition, and then they compare that to the comparison on the appraised value of the property and what the insurance is worth. So that's how they were estimate that on the property saved, it was over two point five million dollars, which is very impressive. Is that kind of in a nutshell, or why? You know. They're pretty, pretty close, clear as mud, I guess you could say. As far as administration, the ISO rating, and again, we continue to focus on that, it's going to be an insurance topic. Right now, the ISO rating for the city is a three, which is good for the area. And the chief tried to explain it to me with the ISO rating. If anyone has any questions, I'm sure Kevin Ritter knows, is a former firefighter, but if anyone else has any questions, I'm going to defer to him here in just a few minutes, because I still didn't understand what you're doing. So the employee handbook, we've had policies and procedures from the, from the agency for a long time. Those needed updated. We actually got with a Lathrop and Gage, that's an employment law council. We told them what we were looking at. We went back and forth and back and forth, and we're proud to say that the, the policy handbook is printed, and all firefighters have a copy of that. And they're also required to sign off and do some testing on those policies. Grant funding, we talked about the FEMA grant that we got earlier for the personnel. We're continuing to look at any other grants that we can, whether you're looking for any apparatus that we can possibly buy, equipment, more personnel. So we're going to continue to look for the grants. Health and wellness, one thing that we want to talk about is the comprehensive medical evaluations for each employee. There may be a typo on this one, Mike, but you'll get the, this is on number four, I believe. It's actually, instead of a yearly basis, it's bi-yearly. So every other year, the firefighters are required to do a comprehensive physical. So that's a good thing, just to make sure that everyone's in shape, and we're not going to have any medical issues. We want to keep everyone safe on the job. Healthcare costs, every year, we're no different than the city, we're no different than anybody else. You're always chasing the healthcare. And so that's what we try to do also, and, you know, we're continuing to fight it. What looks like it's what we anticipated budget wise was probably at least a nine percent increase for twenty twenty-one. And actually, when the numbers came through, they're a little bit lower than, than we were looking at. So we're kind of excited about that, but it is a individual and family healthcare systems is what we're looking at. CARES Act is for the city, I'm sure you're very, very familiar with the CARES Act and what kind of funding you can get there. We are working with personnel from Johnson County Government with the CARES Act, and then looking at equipment. There's a company here in town that has the upright thermometers, you know, you can just walk up and put your hand on it or put your arm on it, and it'll tell you your temperature, things like that. And so we're looking at trying to purchase some of those and any other equipment. In addition to that, what we're looking at through the CARES Act is to find out for any employees that were gone that were possibly symptomatic or asymptomatic. What we're looking at is trying to get with county to see if any of their salary or the overtime that would have been spent covering them can be covered under the CARES Act. And that's still kind of a gray area, but we're looking at everything we can. And again, a solid relationship with the city continues. Fire hydrant program is still under review. Annual safety inspections of each business is going to be starting pretty quick. Long-term planning, some of the things that we want to talk about, you know, station three, which is the one in downtown DeSoto. Any other improvements we need to do to that? If that's the ideal location, the city start to grow, what do we need to do? And so again, as a fire board and working with the chief, we're continuing to look at that. Also, we talked about in twenty twenty-four needing a new fire truck for the station uptown. Do we want to get the traditional fire truck, or do we want to get one with a ladder on it? Because if we get a ladder, I think what that can also do is provide some economic, a little, I would assume anyway, it's going to give the city some, some leverage. If someone wants to build a three story or four story, or whatever you want to do for the city council, then that just gives you the options. And so we want to make sure we have the equipment to satisfy all the city's needs. And that's pretty much it. I believe you guys all have a copy of this. Did I, do you have any questions or anything for me?
Questions from council? Mine was based on, you guys aren't covered by the part of the county's.
Insurance?
Yeah.
No, we're not. We've tried, and what it amounts to, and again, I may refer to the, the chief or one of them to make sure I understand this. We need to have at least, well, we tried to get covered under the, the county's insurance to say, hey, we're kind of an extension of an arm of the county, but they say, no, you're your own entity, even though we get tax money in that regard. So we said, well, what does it take to get our rates to drop down a little bit? And it's fifty. And you have to have fifty employees before you start to get a reduction in the rates. So right now, we're not there. Even whenever we hire the five this next year or this year, we're still not going to need the other fifty.
Right, just put you in a small pool, makes it a little more expensive, so.
Yes, sir. And so that kind of stinks a little bit, but we're still trying.
Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, some questions on some of the stats you put out. I'm curious about metrics and maybe, since you put some of them up here, metrics and maybe how you're measuring your performance or trends over time. So like on the turnout times, where you talk about dispatcher's response time, fifty-six seconds, or, or in particular, on scene response time at four minutes, forty-one seconds. I'm curious how that has trended, or how you, how, how you use that, or what other metrics you use for success. And along that, I'm curious about then that property loss report. And I see that could be like, there's, there could be so many variables that affect that ratio. But is that also some sort of a metric that is used to measure your successfulness or your performance in a, in a trending way? Then I'll have another question after that.
Okay, I know, and I'm going to have chief, but I have also for some of this. I know as far as the board, whenever we see those numbers, we, we rate that, because we'll go to the chief and we'll say, hey, what is our turnout times, what they'll give us at the meetings? And that's all based off of the radio transmission, isn't it? Whenever they, they transmit to the communications division to say, the, the call came in, we are en route to the call. So they're able to immediately document that, and they can do that for every call. If it's a medical assist, if it's a fire, if it's to, you know, respond to the call river. And so that's where those calls or those times and everything are determined off of the radio transmissions. And then you want to talk about the, the property loss?
You're doing great, Doug. Great question.
As far as the property loss numbers go, we look at, as Mr. Redford said, we look at free incident values. Properties valued usually at 50% contents. The 16 structure fires that we responded on, for the most part, in that $2.5 million. I believe that's all calculated into the 2.5, as far as the 16, the 2.5 million. Outdoor times, I have a great group of firefighters. It is one of the crazy things that we don't even have to discuss at a permanent management level. They, they take pride, they want to get out the door quickly. And we also do something a little bit different in our fire department. They're, most of the guys are usually listed in the sheriff's office when we get heads up on, heads up on calls. Sometimes we get there too quick and we're troubled with that safety reasons, but that answer your question.
Well, if you could talk a little bit about how you're, you're pushing those metrics or how you're watching those metrics trend or how you're, what, what metrics you're, you're using, since those are ones you presented, which ones are you using to measure your success? And then how are you pushing to trend them to enhance performance? Or what have you seen say for the trend in response, on, on, on scene response, for example?
The on scene response has actually gone down quite a bit over time. The actual performance measures generated from the county's request. So each year they'll change it, things that they would like to see, the performance measures you would like to see. As far as how we measure it, again, the turnout time, we have that down. Especially we go back and I think we're tracking, we're looking at 10 years back. The, the response time is part of the travel times, out the door, gets there quickly, that four minutes and 41 seconds. That, that's the lowest that it's been in 10 years. Do we have benchmarks? Yes, if I get one call west of the plant, it's going to take us over 20 minutes to get there and averages get totally thrown. So where we want to be at, we've got those numbers set. We want to be every, we try to always average in below six minutes. If I had three calls that are remotely out there, it's going to affect that. Other, other numbers that we look at, time, times are, times are the biggest. We're getting ready to also do something that's not measured by that and a little bit of it will be when we send out customer satisfaction. So originally we're starting measuring that performance, we used to do it, but we're just starting.
Okay, if I can ask you another question. I'm curious how you interface with some of the industries that we have in town in terms of making sure you have adequate, adequate equipment, adequate facilities, adequate engagement, you know, with, with the bigger facilities, you know, good mucky, raring, whatever it may be, particularly may present fire hazard. Or maybe with the school, the schools to, to make sure that they're covered. And then kind of an extension to that is one of the items on our agenda tonight is update to our economic development plan. And, and so what, what's the interface when we talk about growth in the community, such as the apartment facility that's expanding or growth going on down along, down along K10? How do you factor that into your, your needs and your future planning?
And I talked to Mr. Brummer about this not too long ago, growth is kind of tough for us to track. And then as far as assessing, we, we pay attention to your numbers as far as rooftop, rooftop growth, that's huge. The relationships that we have with the larger businesses in the city, we meet on a regular basis, sometimes it's annually. They, the bigger businesses usually have great safety programs, and that's because of their insurance ratings. Between the relationships we have, donated materials, especially during the pandemic, we've had a lot of support. We've gotten phone calls about how, how can we help you? Our visit with CBO check on a regular basis, we review building plans, whether it's the addition to the K10 apartments. We review those plans, especially when it comes to life safety. We also get into each business once a year for life safety reasons. And that serves multiple purposes, grant, life safety, we're looking for the big ones, block exits, block fire lanes, housekeeping inside there, anything that would present hazards, especially in higher occupancy businesses. And that's getting ready to start this year. And also gives our guys, it's a good time for them to get the eyes on structure prior to having an emergency there. We have a good relationship with the school district. We provide free DMS cameras at football games, both for the high school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Anything else from anybody?
Mayor, I'd just like to, to thank Chief Max and then the, and the board for giving the report. It's all good stuff. You know, I know several of the things that you just asked about, Kevin, are national standards. And these numbers are far below what those national standards would, would be. So another, another commendation for a job well done. And then, you know, lastly, I'd like to especially commend you for getting the safer grant because that is a, that is a process that is very detailed. And a lot of points and time go into that when it gets reviewed. So must have been well written and extra personnel would be great. So thank you all.
Oh, if no one else has anything, oh, thank you. Thank you, chief, thank you, board.
Thank you.
Appreciate your services. And we'll move on. Item B, consider application for deer depredation permit of 8950 Oak Country Lane.
Yes, council, you granted this permit for this property in prior years. Just to refresh everyone's recollection, this program, we've worked with the Kansas Department of Parks and Wildlife. But essentially what it allows is the owner of land to ask for a permit that would allow people to do archery hunting for deer during the deer season as outlined by the state program. So the resolution that you have in your packet, that, that resolution has to be carried by anybody that is hunting on the, the land and present that if, if they are approached by code enforcement officers. So I did receive, heard from Mr. Sheridan that, that he did send out letters to the adjoining property owners as is required in the city code. So it's my recommendation that, that he is satisfied with requirements of the application.
Okay, questions from council? A resolution number?
1035.
We won't make a motion.
Don't make a motion, we approve resolution number 1035 for any application property located at 8950 Oak Country Lane for exemption from prohibition of discharging the owner outside the confines of the building.
Okay. We can make a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, council, motion carried.
Okay. Item C, consider resolution on whether structure at 8225 Delaware is unsafe and dangerous. But we just heard this report, do you need to add anything new to us or? Well, I'll defer to Patrick.
Yes, just wanted to let the council know, just to, so you're aware of the process. What you're considering this evening in this resolution is simply you're making a finding whether based on the evidence presented to you, this structure is unsafe and dangerous. And as I indicated in my memo to you, currently the time period, the, the statute in the city code requires that in the event you make a finding that it is unsafe and dangerous, it's required that you provide the owner of the property a period of time to make the property not be unsafe and dangerous. So the statute does not dictate how much time that, you know, you're to give the property owner. It's just interpreted as a reasonable amount of time. I put in the resolution a period of 30 days, but if you, you know, it's up, it's within your discretion. If you want to change that, I, I feel like making it shorter than 30 days, given the, the damage to the property probably is not feasible. But in the event the property owner does not make, you make a finding that's unsafe and dangerous, the property owner does not comply with your directive that's set out in the resolution, we would need to come back to you for another resolution to abate the unsafe and dangerous attributes of the property. So as to what the city would do if the property owner fails to do anything, that would be for another, another council meeting.
Okay. Questions from council? Is that three days to start working on it or to complete making it safe?
The way the statute is worded, it's to commence the repair and rehabilitation of the property.
So to start?
To start and then to diligently keep pursuing that.
I would have, I guess, one question, like, we already posted it uninhabitable, right? I mean, the chief building official had that authority. How do we enforce that order? Apparently that was not enforced, I know it's kind of a tangent here, but it will be germane to this because it'll be the same situation. We'll have something posted then that sounds like would be difficult to enforce or challenged as well.
Yeah, so the, the options we have in the city code, I don't know if you guys recall, but when we had the issue downtown with the, the gun store, we amended the city code to indicate that no one is permitted to live in a structure, that live in a structure if for 30 days or more, there are no utilities at that property. And so clearly that 30 days has gone by, no one can be living in that property. We can ticket persons in violation of that provision. Also, the zoning regulations allows the building official to issue a permit for someone to have a camper on the property in the event of a fire. As far as I know, she's never, never pursued that. I did recently talk to, or communicate with, with Mike and Steve about the prospect of filing a lawsuit in Johnson County District Court to get an injunction against anyone living in that.
So that's our ultimate relief then is through the courts then to make sure that it's.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so can I just, to be perfectly honest with you, I wondered how, you know, particularly given with COVID, I understand the problems amass, but how would you judge?
Officers of such a move at this time.
Would receive that, you know? But I do, Mike, I don't know if you want to address.
Yeah.
The efforts that you made.
Well, it's too bad that Mr. Elmer left. But you know, Steve has, has let me know from day one that the neighbors had large concerns about the state of the property, this is about the history of the property. We're not, you know, day one didn't start with fire. There's been a history of this property. And so I understand the neighbors' frustration, Steve's frustration. But I just, obviously tonight, we're just talking about the structure. So we kind of have to divorce the structure issue from the, the human issue of, of what we're dealing with.
I guess what I promised Mr. Elmer was what, so this was July or what?
Yeah.
Yeah, the timeframe that we're from July to October 15th, I'm assuming that it's the process, the due process of things that need to happen that, you know, to ensure someone's rights are not trampled in our.
Well, that's exactly right, yeah. And so that process is pretty well defined on the structure. You know, give them time, you know, there's a fire, that's not habitable, they give them time for repairs. Now we have to determine it unsafe, more time. Then there's some final resolution, if they don't do that, probably more time. So but at least that's defined. And we, we know how long that sort of thing can take. You remember the thing down off of K10?
Oh, gosh, that's just.
Years. Complicating this particular issue is the ownership of the property. The, it's actually, the, the owner is actually a deceased individual. And his heirs are, do not include the occupant. So his heirs are less than enthusiastic about making claim to the property since it's basically, it's a negative value right now. But the structure that needs to be torn down is probably not, removing the structure didn't work with a lot yet. So there's that complication as well. The bigger, the biggest problem is really the, the, probably some sort of an underlying mental health issue with.
Right.
With Nigel. And I talked to the sheriff, so during, you know, August and September, the sheriff did visit the site on numerous occasions, as did the mental health first responders from the county, social workers from the county. If she refuses help, they can't drag her off with their kicking and screaming. Even if they could, and even if they did, she'd just come back, right? And so on any given time to go out there, unless she's accosting the neighbors or, or doing something acutely illegal at the moment, it's difficult for an off, for a deputy standing there, how is he going to solve this problem? So next week, we're going to, we're going to get together and try to head scratch on the human side of, of the problem. For now, we're doing all we can on the structure, so.
Okay.
I know, yeah, I know it's a frustration for the neighbors. I don't blame them.
If I may just address one other issue, and that is as far as the timing goes. So I think it was three meetings ago when you passed the resolution to schedule the hearing. And by the statute, we have to do two publications and they have to be spaced out. So tonight was the soonest date we could have that hearing and comply with the notice.
I was certain we were probably moving at the schedule we're supposed to. I just, I'd hope Mr. Elmer would stay here. I mean, we have to maintain, we have to follow the laws and we want to make sure that if it was mine, I would want to make sure that my rights and my timeline was respected, and that's what we're doing, so. Yeah.
So a couple of questions. If they don't respond to doing any repairs or anything by the 30 days, what would be the timeframe of events after that, events to take place? That's one, I got a couple of questions on.
Yeah, so the, you would pass another resolution, again, indicating to the property owner that the city's intention is to abate the issue. And, you know, it likely would be a much shorter, like 10 days or a shorter period. But again, we would be telling the, the interested parties that you failed, you know, to comply with the resolution issued to make the property not unsafe and dangerous. And so now the city is abating it itself. And if you don't pay the bill, we'll assess it to the property, so.
Would there be a hearing for that? I mean, so would we be looking at like, then probably a month, I mean, two publications again before, like?
No, the, the abatement doesn't require those same publications, just this far. But after this, yeah, it'll move a lot fast.
But abating it would be basically assessing the, to the property value?
Yes, well, assessing, it's like a, a tax assessment, so.
Would that be assessment for actually raising it or would that be?
It can be whatever the city determines is the best thing to do to either demolish it or rehabilitate it.
So timeframe to raise or rehabilitate it would be what from resolutions and testing out things like that?
Well, if the resolution that's before you this evening brings about no results, then upon, you know, the next council meeting, after that 30 days runs, I would have a resolution prepared for your consideration on abatement. On, and as to, you know, it would, again, we would discuss what's the best thing that the city council believes to be done with the property.
And Rob, can I ask, kind of interjecting that a little bit because I'm, I'm not clear on something. So, because I am concerned about timing as well, but it says that this is about when the repairs work commences. But it says that this is about when the repairs work commences. And as the gentleman who appeared said, he said, I gotta give her credit, she's been trying to do something. So how does that affect this timing question that Rob has? How much time do we give?
And depending on that, what level of commencement of clean up a few boards? Or does this mean the contractor coming in to do things?
Yeah, I would think it would mean a building permit, right? You would come, that's, to do any work, a permit would be required, right? So I would say, we could, if we need a, we can add that word to the resolution, right? That a current occupant cannot apply for that permit because they're not. The owner, right? So.
So this isn't going to work either, anyway? Because he's deceased, right?
Well, it would work, your major, Megan wanted to come and pull a permit, that would be.
Yeah, Megan, yeah, one of the kids, one of the kids for.
Well, it's just one heir. As far as I know, it is Bernard Gardner's son.
Okay.
And we did have him served at his home address with the copy of the notice. And there is, you know, the statute talks in terms of the last known address of the owner. So, you know, given that he's the only heir, I mean, it's, I'm not, but I, I don't think it's a fact that, oh, well. I mean, I think the city still has the power to move forward, irrespective of the status of, you know, there hasn't been approbated or the technical owner has, I mean, there's an owner listed on the Johnson County land records as Bernard, and I believe the son, I can't remember if he was the son listed on there as well? He's not, okay.
So what type timeframe would we be looking at for the city to actually raise it or rehabilitate it?
Well, that's up to you, you know, if you're gonna hire a contractor to do it, then, you know, I don't, I don't know, that's really up to, you know, what resources you want to throw at the property in the event the property owner doesn't.
But why I'm asking is based on the resolutions, response times, I mean, as quick as, as long as.
For a demo? I mean, they'll, they can.
Before the city.
What's the first date that we can demo the thing?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, I'm not necessarily looking to go that way, but.
Yeah.
So, yeah, after the next meeting, because if nothing happens before the next meeting, which is not from now, a little over, so it'd be past the thirty days, and we'd say that we're going to abate it.
Probably like our first meeting in December, we would be looking at this again, assuming nothing happened, right?
We need to get a bid to do whatever we're gonna do and what it will take. So you're looking at December, probably.
Right. And great, second question. Let's say that it does end up being raised. Camper, other, I mean, what happens if they still own the property?
Well, that would have to be done with September.
Running into winter and cold and.
Yeah, I mean, that's the whole human side of it, that's a whole separate, separate issue. And I don't have an answer. We, I mean, we've talked with the sheriff's department and the county health and social workers. There's no good answers there. We've heard from Patrick, you know, our court order doesn't seem like, you know, that might not be an answer either. So I'm afraid I have to report, I don't have great answers on, on the human side of the thing. Know what the problem is. And we have, you know, we've got a meeting set up next week to try and deal with the problem. I'm not sure it's gonna be a mechanical sort of step one, two, three on this. It may have to be a social, you know, mental health sort of response. Just, just not really, Major doesn't have any place else to go, I mean, that's the fact. And if she's of her own free will, that's where she's gonna be, at least for now. So, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to see, see what progress we can make in the next couple of weeks.
Mayor, I have, I have a question for Patrick or Steve.
Okay, go ahead.
Steve, could you just refresh me on when you post that, that do not enter sign, that it's inhabitable or it's unsafe to enter? And Patrick, you may be able to answer this better. But do we have any teeth with that? I mean, if somebody enters that, I mean, do we have, can we assess a fine? Or is it, you know, does our, does our code allow that? Or do we need to change it so people can't reenter them? You know, is there any possible fine or jail time that can be added to those? So, so then the proper process of going through the building official is taken in the right manner?
Yeah, definitely under the city code provision about the many, minimum utility services required, it specifically indicates that the city, the city can ticket, if it's true that she's violating that, the city can issue tickets on a daily basis against her for living in that structure. I guess I had understood that she's living in the camper, not the structure. And I think Steve, I can't remember if I talked to you or Walter, but I think that's something that Walter is trying to monitor as to whether she's living in the structure of the camper.
Well, it's pretty hard for us to monitor that. The neighbors have been probably the best information. They constantly call and say she's in it. And of course, they now say several of them have said she's living in the camper, but it's a friend of hers, I guess, I don't know. But she's in and out of the house. And it was posted do not occupy on twenty-sixth.
Yeah, and I think, just directly on the question about it being posted, do not occupy, I know, I don't have the building, but Steve and I looked at that issue as to, I think we were considering, can we ticket her through the vehicle of the building code? And it was my thought at that time that it was a much easier approach to do it under the city code. And I can't remember exactly the hurdle that I saw, but I thought it'd be a lot easier through the city code rather than the building, the building. But I think the building code talks in terms of, it's more like a zoning violation that there are several hoops you gotta jump through. Whereas the minimum utility provision is pretty straightforward. You know, you know, if there's been no utilities there for thirty days, then you can't be in that structure. And that's, if I were to file in Johnson County District Court, which it sounds like that's what I'm going to need to do just to, as we move along, I would do that, ask the court for an injunction underneath, under the provision that she's living in the structure that has no utilities. But obviously, we would have to have evidence presented to the judge that that's the case, that she's not living in the trailer, she's living in, in the structure.
Does it, is there electricity to the trailer? I mean, does the trailer have utilities? What's the difference?
No, electricity, there's no water.
So that wouldn't be, it wouldn't be any more legal to stay in a trailer with no utilities and a house with no utilities.
Well, that's correct. Just to note, there is a permit process, for a temporary permit through the building official. If your house is burned, you can apply for a permit and stay in a trailer if the building official approves that. So, but yes, you're right, she doesn't have that permit, so she's not in the trailer lawfully either. I just, what I talked to Mike and Steve about is the idea that, obviously, assuming Major was in court, she will prescribe to the judge that, or the house that, you know, she's somehow allowed to live in there. It's not, I mean, whoever gave her that permission, that's her business, that's not going to be the business of the court. But she will be telling the judge that, you know, my house burned and this is the only place I have to stay, and yes, I'm in a trailer. And it very well means that a judge will say, hey, too bad, you know, the law is the law. You gotta, I'm gonna enter an injunction and then the Johnson County Sheriff's Office will have to enforce that injunction and physically remove her from the property. And that very well may be the result. I wonder if a judge would.
Well, I just don't believe that, that if it's unsafe to enter right now and you have forty percent loss of the rafters, it's gonna snow soon. So the snow load is gonna, is probably gonna, you know, take that roof down. So, I mean, something has to be done sooner than later.
Yeah, I mean, if the question is, can we barricade the property? I think there's not a problem with that. I mean, I don't know what, you know, because, yeah. I guess I don't know enough about, is she living in the structure? I mean, obviously, you know, but if it's true she's not living in the structure, then I'd be comfortable with us somehow barricading the property as long as it didn't interfere with, you know, then, yeah, I can see an issue of saying, well, you know, we can't, we can't work on the property if it's barricaded.
We can't work on it till you have the permit, so. You need the permit to work.
And Steve, during that permit process, you would work with that contractor to just make the home stable or the roof and those things, right? So they can work in there? Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so all that process would go okay if that was the way that it was gonna go. I'm just worried that we have a sticker or we have a policy that we stick on a door and, but we don't have any, we don't have anything, any teeth behind it. If it's unsafe to enter and we post it that way, you know, we don't want to see somebody go in there and get hurt or killed. So that's my, that's my concern.
Good point. Patrick, you're saying that it could be barricaded?
Yeah, just the idea of, that's something I would be willing to, you know, explore. And, I mean, I haven't given it much thought, to be honest, as far as, you know, how would we go about doing that?
Because, I mean, even if it was like temporary snow fencing over the entrances, you'd find out quickly if somebody was going in or out, though.
I think another going in and out, maybe another staying there. And, you know, we can talk about this all night, it's not really gonna get us any further.
Right, so.
Right, tonight, it's getting this part done. And, you know, I would like to say, you know, knock it down to a shorter time, but I think in all fairness to her, we have to leave it, you know, this gets us the first, second meeting in December, or in November, probably coming back to us. You know, I don't think she probably is gonna come up with the money or is gonna do anything this month. We all know that, but we still need to follow by into what we're gonna do. Just all we can do is have a plan and do what we can to help her and her family figure this out so that she does have somewhere to go and something to happen from it. You know, no matter what the case is, even if she does come and has a permit and do, you know, it's still gonna take months for it to get repaired. And she's still in the same situation as far as needing a place to live. And her choice is gonna be what it is. And that's probably living in a trailer, if that's what it's gonna take for her, so. You know, we don't have any authority in doing that. I just would suggest we.
Move forward.
Get this thing and then forward, and in a month, we'll come back and hopefully have some really good answers.
You know, another concern, but then according to paper too, you know, this year, there'll be six years of bad taxes that haven't been paid.
Right.
Okay, so that does bring up a question for me on timing. And if we've been dealing with him for a while, I'm not opposed to shortening the time. Looking at the calendar, we are in a five Thursday month. So it's three weeks before our next council meeting, which would be the fifth. That's twenty-one days from night. Yeah, it's thirty days, that would be in the week of the November ninth, which the next council meeting date is the nineteenth, the week before Thanksgiving. So at that point, it'd come back the week before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we'll come back to it.
And Steve, if we go with the abatement at the next, next council meeting, that process has a piece in it too for asbestos abatement requirements and things like that. So that'll take a little bit of time for you to do that as well, won't it?
Absolutely, and a house this old, I'd be concerned with that.
Thank you.
We will, we will need to serve a copy of this resolution, assuming you want to serve that on the same two people. We served the notice, which we'll need to get the help of the sheriff's office previously. That took a few days to get that done, because they had to find Mr. Gardner of Clearbury City. So the thirty days will run from when they're served with that resolution, which I assume will be in the next, you know, Monday, Tuesday, next week at the latest.
So it could run into another meeting, actually, into December. Mostly shortened it from thirty days.
I would leave it at the thirty, I'm just.
I think it's, you know, I think.
But I think we do need to act and.
I think it's, you know, the chance, there'll be a chance to maybe help that most of my days.
Yeah, I guess, Mike, you know, you said you're gonna start talking with sheriff or whoever with social services. And, you know, I can't imagine that this is the first time this, this is, this kind of thing has ever happened. And, you know, whether you're looking at, you know, how did other communities handle it? How's Kansas City, Missouri handled something like this, or Wyandotte County? You know, there's, there seems to me there's gotta be some social service outlet or opportunity, you know, to help or relocate or something. Obviously, there's, you know, costs and mental health issues involved. But, you know, I get the, I get the personal side. Obviously, we've got, the two do end up kind of playing together because we're relying upon how somebody responds to this. But, you know, I would just encourage you to learn, you know, you're gonna learn here too. And get the best advice you can.
I agree with everything. I just would just say that I think you'd be shocked at how thin the mental health services are, even in a rich county like Johnson County. You'd be shocked at how few actual services there are for mental health.
That's unfortunate.
And that's what we're up against, really. I mean, that's, that's why we're here tonight.
It also, it also illustrates really the contrast in our community issues where we have this, this is a serious, serious issue. We were arguing about, or not arguing, we were debating weeds a couple of weeks ago, you know?
Yeah.
This is a big deal.
One, I guess, probably my concern is safety across the board and maybe even people's safety of, like Kevin was saying, when the snow comes and other things of, if it's unsafe to be in, then as winter comes, cold comes, snow comes, conditions come, that only increases risk.
Or even right now, potential for another fire.
Well, I think she probably understands the sense of that too. I mean, it's not like she doesn't understand that, that's why it's posted the way it is. She's choosing to do it, you know?
Were you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd be glad to make a motion, resolution.
One zero three six, yes, ma'am.
Finding structure located at eight two two five Delaware Street is unsafe and dangerous and subject to being repaired or raised or moved by the city of the set of the property owners.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? We've got a roll call.
Daniels?
Yep.
Mike? Lane?
Yes.
Redder?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yeah.
Thank you, counsel, motion carried.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good, good to see you all.
Thanks.
Item D, consider some recipient agreement with Johnson County for CARES Act funding for broadband extension. Cameron, it's good to see you here.
Yeah, yeah, he's one of our partners right there. Right. This, we introduced it by a report at the end of the last meeting. This effort that actually Kevin Hunter Michael's instrumental in bringing forward this opportunity from the CARES Act fund. The mechanism is that the funds will funnel through the city, but really every dime will go to ZOOM and to RG to build a conduit bank, I think specifically build a conduit bank. ZOOM is building along Kill Creek from ninety-fifth down to one hundred and fifteen, and RG is building along Waverly from ninety-eighth down to one hundred and fifteen. I know ZOOM's got a head start, you guys have been working on this all.
I know Zoom's got a head start, you guys have been working on this already. Our obligations, as far as the sub-recipient agreement goes, it's the exact same format as the one we have for our CARES Act funding. So, all the wording is the same, the attachments are a little different because it just explains the project that's being funded. Our obligations are limited to only verifying that the work is in and in place and functional and meets the description essentially of what it was that we, that we said we were going to do. Once that happens, we tell the county that, yes, this work has been done. They send us the check, we write a check to RG and Zoom. There's also a provision where we could get a partial payment on that as work is done. But we won't do that any more than probably about a monthly basis. So, that's, essentially, that's the deal. Gavin, I'd like you to add to that.
I spoke at, I spoke at the last meeting. I don't have anything to add unless there's any questions.
Questions from counsel?
So, the work has to be done by the end of the year, correct?
Yeah.
And so, but we don't have any, I mean, if it doesn't get done, it doesn't get done and they don't get paid.
That's right.
So, that's not, there's no.
Yeah, so what.
Contact with us on the timing and it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. Yeah, what happens, December 30th, we'd go out and see how much is done and they could probably be reimbursed for that part.
Really, the main downside is it's money that's available that wouldn't get spent and will be returned under CARES Act funding. So, the objective and part of the project approval process is they were looking for low, low risk or high probability that whatever was being proposed could be carried out. Because, you know, really, the last thing the county wants us to do is have to turn money back from perfectly good projects. So, that's really the only risk. All of the administration of the work is done under permits issued by the county. They, when, when we were going through this process, they were looking for an administrator of the funds who, who had experience with this kind of work and it's really the person who will validate it. And they didn't, they didn't want to put that on Public Works Department who's issuing the construction permit. And so, they asked if the city would do that part of it. So, the money generally doesn't even flow through the city at all. There's no exchange of funds. It's just somebody who, the city's role will be to authorize the payments to be released.
Hey, I just had one question. If one of the, are they restricted to each side of their, their piece? Or if one completes theirs before the other, can they, you know, help, help get that community, the other, the other piece finished up before the end of the year? Or is that, or does RG just do Waverly and?
No, they do whatever they want. They're just getting a partial, partial funding or partial reimbursement for that particular definition of facility. They don't have to stop at 115th. They don't, you know, they can build the facility that they want, but they have to get conduit to 115th by the end of the year. Originating from one of the handholds that was constructed as part of the city public-private partnership.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for getting all that done. I'm glad to see it going further south.
Okay. Any other questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize city administrators to sign a sub-recipient agreement with Johnson County for $375,000 in CARES Act grant funding to extend broadband internet, internet infrastructure.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Hana Michael?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, motion carried.
Okay.
Item E, consider revisions to economic incentive policy.
Um, yes, counsel, we introduced this here several months ago. The EDC Executive Committee worked on this along with the EDC for several months over the spring. I think we started last, almost a year ago, working on this, this new philosophy. I won't go into it in detail again, other than just to remind you that the incentives are now targeted to different areas and we've defined industries that we will target in these specific areas and we've defined levels of abatement for each one of those areas as well. Our charge at the last meeting when we introduced this and we had a detailed discussion about it was to go to the EDC board and get their input on it. It was very well received with the EDC board and they didn't have any suggested revisions other than to express their full support for something like this. This really gives them the tools that it will give staff in directing potential projects that come along to toward a specific incentive package to decrease the uncertainty for someone coming in, coming in or trying to decide on where they're going to locate either DeSoto or somewhere else. So, it really is, you know, it's a little groundbreaking. Not many other cities have a citywide thing like this. Some, some cities have specific areas where they target specific things, but generally, you don't see it on a citywide level like this. So, yeah, I think it, I think it does speak to some innovation and to some enthusiasm about economic development that we don't see with our partner cities. Hopefully, that'll make us stand out in the crowd a little bit. To adopt it, Patrick has prepared an ordinance and we will be essentially replacing Article 13 in the city code. Talking about economic development incentives. Patrick prepared a red line, actually, there's a blue line version of the red line version that you've seen before. So, he, he did, he did some administrative text provisions to what you had seen before. So, there is, there is an ordinance, a clean one there on your staff report, if you want to go ahead and adopt the new plan.
Okay. Any questions from counsel? Or comments from counsel?
The ordinance number is 2500.
Did it, right? A double lot ordinance. It's going to be good. Or a motion, anybody ready to make?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Nobody has any comments? I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2500, meaning Article 13 and Chapter 1 of the city code to update the city's policy procedures related to economic incentives available from the city. That's written.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? Seeing on roll call, please.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Hana Michael?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, motion carried.
Okay. Item F, consider bids for horse drivers.
Yes, counsel, the most exciting item on our agenda evening. This is another element of CARES Act funding that exceeds my authority, so it's got to come to you. This will be funded for CARES money. We had initially requested $8,000 for this. Turned out we're more than double, but cleared with the county that that's not an issue considering what we're buying. There's actually two units. One is a sit-down unit like this one here for larger areas. We think this will primarily be used at the city street shop. The other area or the other unit would be a walk behind like this that we can use in tighter quarters, probably more around City Hall, Community Center. We got the pricing proposal from our regular, regular vendor that does our cleaning supplies, Pure Zone, and they adhere to the regional mark pricing cooperative, so they've offered those discounts. So, the total is 17,745 and I'm just asking for counsel approval to make those purchases.
Questions or a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we accept the pricing proposals from Pure Zone for the horse drivers combined amount of $17,745 with expenses to be reimbursed by CARES Act grant funding.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hana Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, motion carried.
Okay. Item five, executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to recess into executive session at 8:20 for 20 minutes to discuss preliminary discussion of land acquisition for future commercial development pursuant to statutory basis land acquisition, KSA 7543196, with the open meeting resuming in the city council chamber at 8:40.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All right, motion a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Close? Okay. Cameron, I'm sorry, we're going to, because we have the other group on, we're going to ask you to step out if you're in mind. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thanks for working on that project.
Absolutely, we're just enjoying playing rock. See you guys later. I do see also, counsel, we do have a guest, Richard Stevens. I got a text from Whitney, I think maybe our live stream, live stream wasn't working this evening. So, he asked for this, so he's here and Richard, you don't have to respond, but I'm going to have to kick you off and we'll be back. I'll, I'll have to kick you off, lock the meeting and then I'll unlock the meeting. When did we send people back?
Eight forty.
At eight forty, so. Sorry, I don't like kicking people off, but I'll have to kick people, kick Richard off. Let's see. How do I do that? Yep. Okay, and I will lock that and I'm going to stop.
This conference will now be recorded.
Just not sure, Whitney said the live stream wasn't going, but I have it recording.
Yeah, Mike, it did state that you begin recording and then it stated you stopped, so.
For the live stream?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, now, eight forty, we're back in regular session, so we will carry on with our agenda. Library report. Mike?
Been extremely busy with an EDC proposal, but other than that, nothing to do report, answer any questions.
Oh, you did other things.
I've been doing a few.
He presented our project for the bridge replacement at the Mark SDP committee meeting this morning.
That's right. So, hold my breath on that one?
Hold the breath, yeah.
We requested 1.5 million. We think that project's going to be about 2.4. Bridge has to come up about three feet. What's that? 83rd Street over the government railroad, just west of downtown. Yeah, it's been on our CFP for 15 years. Yeah, so, you know, we can sing the sad story that Mark, we, DeSoto has never in our history received a dime of federal funding that had been funneled to Mark.
Yeah.
Never a single dime. I don't think any other community in the Mark region could say that. So, we're playing that card as often as we can.
It doesn't work, I'm just going to blackball them all. I'll just vote no on everybody's project.
Yeah, true. Yeah. Yeah, the mayor, the mayor's on the, on the review committee, so.
No, I really wouldn't do that. Okay.
Okay.
City attorney, Patrick?
Nothing for me.
All right. City planners are not here, so city clerk, what do you got for us?
I don't have anything this evening, mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel comment. Danny, are you there? You got anything for the counsel tonight?
Yes, I'm here, mayor, thank you. I only have one thing. I went down and also heard a complaint from Jake Fireworks facade on their building. One panel was gone, the other was blowing in the wind. So, I wanted to ask Mike if we need to address that again or what's going to happen down there.
Yeah, we do need to address that again. I've had some code enforcement discussions with Brad and Walter and Steve lately. You remember our policy called for us to keep a running list of up to, I think it's up to 10 properties in the city that are particularly bad from an aesthetic standpoint. I think we've always thought that those would be residential properties. Jason's first on our list.
Okay, that's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Yeah, all right, thank you, Danny. Are they doing the sport stuff inside there? Not to my knowledge. That is. There are a lot of cars there. They're advertising it, okay. Yeah, because one of the DeSoto high school coaches is supposedly part of it. Oh, well, that's good, that's what I thought.
Kevin, Ritter, what do you got, anything tonight?
Mike, I'll call you next week and see if I can set up time to do the same thing with the, as the other guys. And I know you've been extremely busy and, but the mayor sent you a note about the 85th Street deal. So, if you'd like to, I wouldn't mind working with you or something, we can meet with him to, to finish up whatever paperwork or, or things that you want to work out as far as, you know, what his needs are on that street, that dead-end street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, that's right, Mr. Burns.
So, I'd be happy to meet with you and him if you want.
Well, I mean, I can close, I can close the loop back with Mr. Burns, but it looks, you know, that the road there, we really do need to put a layer of asphalt on it. And we're out of, kind of out of the asphalt season a little bit for us right now with what we have coming up. So, what we decided to do was patch some of the holes that are on there now. We'll take, we'll take, essentially just take it over from a maintenance standpoint now. Patch what's there to get it through the winter and then put some, put an overlay of asphalt in the spring.
Yeah, I think, I think one of his last comments was that I was going to share with you as, if we met, was, I don't think he's expecting any snow removal on that street at all. He doesn't want to put, put the city trucks in any compromised position to back in and back out. So, I think it'll be a pretty low maintenance still once this is finished.
Yeah.
Have some of his other issues with surrounding neighbors and stuff and the railroad and all that been kind of?
Yeah, largely, yeah. We've been working with neighbors, they've been.
New property owner, I think.
New property owner, yeah. Somebody carrying down sheds. We've had the railroad right-of-way mode. One of the other things we're going to do in the spring is extend a little drainage pipe out the end of the street so that the railroad right-of-way is loable, because that's a problem. I think, I think we're in a good spot.
Yeah, they mowed that twice this year, that was pretty surprising.
Yeah.
That's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Lori, any?
I don't have anything, very thank you.
Rob? Kevin?
I have nothing.
I don't think I have anything.
Well, I'll make a motion adjourned, so, yeah. Sorry.
All right.
My allergies are killing me.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Everyone have a good night.